Good afternoon and welcome to this press conference. Sorry about that, my apologies. Good afternoon once again and welcome to this press conference for the twenty-sixth special meeting of the Council for Human and Social Development on Education, which ended earlier today. It is my pleasure to invite, to present the outcome of that meeting, a distinguished panel comprising the Chair of COSA and Minister of Education of the Bahamas, the Honourable Geoffrey Lloyd, Dr Wayne Wesley, the Registrar and CEO of CXC, Dr Nicole Manning, Director of Operations of CXC, Professor Clive Landis, Pro Vice Chancellor of the University of the West Indies, and Dr Douglas Slater, Assistant Secretary General at the Caricom Secretariat. It is also my pleasure to welcome representatives of the media who registered to participate at such short notice and to thank the team at UE TV for partnering with the Caricom Secretariat for today's event. I am Kendall Morgan, today's moderator, and I want to begin by inviting the Chair of COSA, the Minister of Education of the Bahamas, Honourable Geoffrey Lloyd, to give us a statement on the outcome of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr Morgan, and going on. The twenty-sixth special meeting of the Council of Human and Social Development, commonly COSA, was convened on the twenty-sixth February and the first March twenty-twenty-one respectively, under the theme Administration of the Twenty-Twenty-One Cape and CSEC nations. The CXC presented for the consideration of the ministers the out-of-the-regional consultations with ministries of education. Consultations with regional stakeholders across the region resulted in a total of five options for the administration of the Cape and CSEC examinations for twenty-twenty-one, initially proposed by CXC. After careful analysis of the recommendations and with a consideration of the impact of the decision on the well-being of students, the COSA agreed: a) that the CXC should administer the Cape CSEC/CCSCL examinations in its original format, that is, for Cape and CSEC Papers One, Two, and Two for private candidates, and for CCSLC Papers One and Two; b) that the examinations are best scheduled during the period June-July twenty-one, with results being available to the Ministers of Education in the last week, September twenty-one; c) that an extension should be given for the deadline if students can make a determination to defer the sitting of the exam. All candidates were to indicate their intent for deferral by first May twenty-twenty; d) that taking into consideration the loss of learning experience that CXC should share with ministries of education for community candidates, the broad topics to be assessed on Paper Two, five weeks before the start of the examinations. CXC also presented to COSA the following for noting: a) the Caribbean Primary Exit Assessment, commonly known as CPEA, will be administered twenty-seven May to twenty-eighth May twenty-twenty-one, with results to be fifteen June twenty-twenty-one; and b) the online training and assessment quality audits for Caribbean Vocational Qualifications, CVQ, to be conducted during the period May to August twenty-one, based on agreement with individual participating territories. So released the last week in September to the ministries of education. The meeting also considered a joint CXC and UWI strategy regulation requirements for Cape applicants for the twenty-twenty-one admission. Endorsed the proposal by UE and CXC to allow students who have won past the least Cape subjects either at Unit One or Two, grades one to four; two, also have the requisities subjects; and three, are currently registered for either Unit One or Two, to qualify as normal matriculants to the University of the West Indies. The COSA remains steadfast in its efforts to work closely with the CXC to ensure that the messaging on the administration of regional examinations is consistent, accurate, and unambiguous. This is important to the interpretation of CXC and to preserve the integrity and validity of examination. The COSA expresses its appreciation to the CXC for its efforts to ensure the smooth transition and matriculation of the region's youth to the world of work, post-secondary, or tertiary education. Recognizing the impact of nineteen pandemic on equitable access and the continuity of learning, the CSU in their deliberations made every effort to advocate for concessions to be provided. Thus, the ministers endorsed the recommendation to provide additional time for in-person teaching and learning to complete the school-based assessment, close teaching gaps, and increase the chances of successful outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, the Honourable Geoffrey Lloyd, Chair of COSA, and Minister of Education of the Bahamas. I now wish to invite and give the floor to our two representatives of CXC, the Registrar and the CEO, Dr Ian Wesley, and the Director of Operations, Dr Nicole Manning, to speak to the details of the outcome of today's meeting, touching in particular on how SPAs will be treated in relation to moderation and deadlines, what happens to an SPA in a deferral, and the management of the CPA and the CVQ exams. I want to begin with the Registrar and CEO, Dr Wayne Wesley.
Thank you very much. The Caribbean Examinations Council is pleased to have enabled consultations across the region to ensure that our students would be given the best opportunity to succeed. Accordingly, as presented by the Chair of COSA, the Honourable Lloyd Jeffrey, we would have presented the details of the result of such consensus, which would have been reviewed by the respective ministries of education across the region, and the consensus approved and arrived at. So further to the information presented by the Honourable Minister, we would want to indicate further then that examinations will commence on the fourteenth of June and end on the sixteenth of July twenty-twenty-one, with CCSLC being administered between the nineteenth and the twenty-second of July twenty-twenty. As it relates to the sharing of topics, while CXC will submit to all ministries of education the broad topics to be assessed on Papers Two, five weeks in advance of the administration of the examinations, which means on May tenth, that listing of topics will be available to the ministries of education. It must be said and indicated, all candidates must be reminded that all topics are covered in Paper One for all subjects. In addition, there are certain subjects to which the details are not readily specifically available in the syllabus. We will make sure that information is provided. As it relates to the school-based assessment, given the issues being experienced by candidates for twenty-twenty-one, CXC reduced the assessment requirements for SBA to as much as fifty percent in some instances, details of which were issued in November twenty-twenty to the local registrars for schools and summary posted on websites for candidates. There is also a one-month extension for submission of all SBAs. CXC will maintain the one-hundred percent moderation of SBAs across all centres for all subjects. As it relates to deferral, a candidate will be able to defer the January twenty-two CSEC sitting, twenty-twenty-two rather, CSEC sitting, or the May-June twenty-twenty-two Cape CSEC or CCSLC session for any subject offered for which they were previously registered. The candidate must indicate an intent to defer from the June-July twenty-twenty-one examination cycle, latest date in May twenty-twenty-one. By the first of May is the ideal time. On indicating an intent to defer, an alternative exam cycle, the candidate's current registration will be placed on hold. On indicating the intent, appropriate approval at the centre level, that's a school, for candidates at the school, in schools rather, and LR offices for private candidates must be obtained. Therefore, those students who are registered through schools will have, will obtain such approval at the school level, but those private candidates who want to defer will have to do so through the local registrar's office. The candidate must then indicate by the registration date for the target examination cycle. All candidates will remain in the same centre for the deferred registration. There will be no fee implications for subject deferral, that is, candidates would not be charged for deferral of subjects even if the deferred subjects are spanned across January and the May-June sessions of twenty-twenty-two. Submitted SBAs and their scores can be deferred for use in the next sitting of the examinations. In light of the above, CXC will be working closely with the ministries of education and the local registrars to ensure that the implementation of these suggested, approved changes will be done smoothly and in the best interest of our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr Wesley, and I'd like to invite now Dr Nicole Manning.
Good afternoon. As outlined by our registrar, the changes that will be made regarding deferral for candidates will be made specifically on our online registration system. This will be facilitated through the local registrar's office, but commencing in the schools through the examination coordinator. That support in relation to the deferral will be provided through our local registrars, done on the online registration system. In addition to that, the candidates will be required to take in their registration in the particular centre for which they would have been registered for the June-July examinations. Candidates will be allowed to sit exams, the examinations, whether through the use of the face-to-face modality or the electronic testing modality. Candidates are encouraged to utilise all the practice tests as they are presented on the website, CXC's website, and candidates will be required to ensure their preparation with assistance from their schools. Candidates are also encouraged to ensure that they visit the website and to be au fait with all the details that has been provided, especially for the school-based assessment where a summary document has been placed for their use. Thank you.
And thank you, Dr Nicole Manning, and before you, Dr Wayne Wesley, both of the Caribbean Examinations Council, CXC. Let me now invite Professor Clive Landis, Pro Vice Chancellor of the University of the West Indies, to share proposed details of the modifications for matriculation to the UWI. Professor Landis.
Thank you very much, Moderator, Honourable Minister, and the ASG and Registrar of CXC, parents, but most especially students. It's my pleasure to speak to you about how UE is looking to facilitate your smooth progression into the university despite all the difficulties brought about by COVID-19. My remarks are going to be especially relevant for Cape students. So the adjusted matriculation requirements were read out by the Honourable Minister. I will read them out again, but I want to give you a brief sort of flavour of what it's attempting to achieve first before I go into the details. So as the Honourable Minister mentioned, we anticipate the results of the delayed Cape exams to be released to the ministries by the end of September, the last week of September. to be released to the ministries by the end of September, the last week of September, and we anticipate they will reach you at the beginning of October. Now, this is, of course, after the UE academic year has already begun. And so our proposal is to allow you to matriculate with the Cape units that you passed last year so that you can make your application to the UE, the UE can look at your application and give you a firm offer right now so that your progression into UE is not going to be in any way hindered. So the matriculation requirements for Cape applicants for the twenty twenty-one admission are as followed, follows. I'm very pleased that the COSA of Education unanimously supported this matriculation proposal, just as they did last year when the same exigencies existed, and this worked very well last year. So this will allow students who have passed at least two Cape subjects either at unit one or two at grades one to four, who also have the requisite CSEC subjects and are currently registered for either unit one or two, to qualify as normal matriculants into the UE. I do wish to remind students that the matriculation standard that I have just articulated, it is a minimum admission requirement, and faculties are free to make the requirement more stringent if they so wish. So it's quite possible that the faculties of medicine, engineering, and law will have different and additional requirements beyond what I have read out. But what this allows you to do is right now, based on last year's Cape units that you said, to make an application to UE so that the faculties can consider it, and you can have a dialogue about all of the admission requirements, you know, it's more than just grades. We also need a lot of personal details, and then the university is able to make you an offer. And so this will allow the smooth progression despite all of the difficulties, anxieties, and uncertainties that currently exist into the UE if the UE is your university of choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Landis. Let me now invite Assistant Secretary General at the CARICOM Secretariat, Dr. Douglas Slater, to speak to the role of the CARICOM Secretariat in coordinating the collaboration, the importance of CXC to the region, and the need for consistent messaging. ASG Slater.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, Honorable Chair and other ministers who are online.
We're having an audio.
Try again, is that any better? Hello? Okay, all right. Honorable Chair, other ministers, CXC CEO, Dr. Leslie, the PVC Pro Vice Chancellor of UWI, Professor Landis, other delegates and stakeholders. The CARICOM Secretariat, as convener of the meetings of the councils of the community, we were pleased to be able to pull together this meeting, a very important meeting, at a time when we are all aware of the challenges of COVID to our regional socioeconomic development. The CXC, as our regional examination council and our other stakeholders have worked over the past few days to try to come to a decision with the changes and the conditions that were expressed. We are very pleased that member states and all these stakeholders, which included other members of the CXC council, such as the University of Guyana, the University of the West Indies, ministers of our member states, and also representatives of the Caribbean Union of Teachers were all involved in the decision, as you would imagine. Oh boy, from beginning? Okay, all right. My apologies about that. I, okay. Chair of COSA, Honorable Minister Jeffrey, other ministers on the panel are online, the CEO of CXC, Dr. Leslie, the Pro Vice Chancellor of the UWI, Professor Landis, other delegates and stakeholders, including the other members of the council of the CXC, other stakeholders such as the Caribbean Union of Teachers, parents, teachers, and as we all know, most importantly, our students are listening. I wish to, on behalf of Secretary General Owen LaRocque, thank the participants for coming together and coming to a unanimous decision on the issues that were outlined earlier. It comes at a time when we are all challenged by the impact of COVID, and understandably, the challenges created were, had to be deliberated on in the best interest of our students. We are pleased from the Secretariat to have been able to coordinate and collaborate and have the collaboration done, and we thank all of you for your inputs, and will be working closely with all the other stakeholders to ensure that the exams described are implemented, administered in a smooth fashion. Thank you. Over.
Thank you very much, ASG Slater. And it's time now for me to invite members of the media to ask questions of the panel. Please, as is the usual in these events, use the raise hand feature on the Zoom platform to indicate your interest in asking a question, and when called upon, please put on your camera if you're in a position to do so, state your name and media house and proceed with your question. I have a raise hand from Jermaine Abel, who I now invite to pose a question to the panel.
Good afternoon. I have two questions. The first question has to do, is directed to Mr. Wesley. Can you give us a sense of, we know there were some controversies last year, can you give us a sense of, in terms of numbers, how many students applied and made requests for review of their results? And how many changes in terms of grades were presented coming out of that review process that was undertaken by CXC?
Okay, thank you very much for that question. I'm gonna ask Dr. Manning, who is working closely with those numbers to just report on the progress to date. Dr. Manning?
Okay, good afternoon. Thank you for the question. So CXC received a total of twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty requests for reviews. And to date, we would have completed for CSEC ninety-one percent, over ninety-one percent, approximately ninety-two percent of those reviews. For Cape, we would have completed over ninety-three percent of those reviews. And yes, sorry, that, I think that gives the update.
You had a follow-up question?
Yeah, it, it, but you asked one part of the question. The second part was out of how, out of what was reviewed so far, how many changes were made to the grades that were submitted to students?
Is that better? Hello? Okay.
Okay, Dr. Manning, are you going to respond?
Yes. So in relation to reviews, we would have had positive grade changes. So let me just first of all say that we had no grade diminution for any candidate who would have requested a review. Now, in relation to the positive grade changes for Cape of the nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, well, it's now nine thousand one hundred and eighteen completed, we would have had one point seven seven percent grade, positive grade changes, and for CSEC, point five four percent. I want to add though that, given what we would have seen and what they, what would have been happening given COVID nineteen, and CXC always gives consideration for issues of this kind, what we call hardship cases. And so we would have had further borderline considerations where we would have seen a eight point two eight percent positive grade change for Cape and nine point three eight percent for CSEC.
Thank you. Mr. Abel, you had a second question?
Yes, the second question has to do with the timelines for the implementation of some of the proposals that came out, or recommendations that came out of meeting in March. Realistically, is there an expectation that some of these recommendations, or if not all the recommendations, will actually be implemented within this, this time span?
Taken on board, and by the end of this year, most of them would be implemented. As it relates to the immediate offering of examinations for twenty twenty-one, those recommendations are taken on board, and we are actually at this moment conducting SBA training with teachers right across the region to ensure that the issues related to SBAs or the concerns regarding SBAs would be addressed. We have also started the task of rebuilding our item bank to make sure that we have sufficient items available to create a greater level of reliability, given the concerns raised with the exams, particularly multiple choice paper. So we are working on our item bank in that regard. We would have started looking back at our syllabuses. We would have made adjustments to our SBAs and all those issues that were raised. We would have put deliberate actions in place to address those. So yes, we, by the end of this year, most of those actions, if not all, will be implemented because some of those changes will only come after several other interventions to make us more efficient and effective.
Thank you, Dr. Wesley. I see some comments in the chat about not finding the raise hand option. So I would ask if any media representative is finding that difficulty, if they can just jump in. In the meantime, I want to invite in Ms. Graves.
There.
The Graves, Matt Rogers.
Good afternoon. That's okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My question is for either Dr. Wesley or Ms. Manning. Last year, a number of the criticisms that came out of the review were that if a person received, say, a grade four, they only, their their new mark only increased, say, to a three, or if you got a two, you only got a one in the review. Are you satisfied with the overall review process?
The last part of your question was, whether I'm, am I satisfied with review process? Was that the last part of your question?
Yeah. Are you satisfied that what was done was the adequate, was adequate enough to?
We are satisfied with the review process because the review process reflected what the stakeholders would have requested. In the case where all persons submitting a review, those papers will have to be remarked, and that remark process would then give greater level of scrutiny on those paper that will ensure that the marks awarded would have been reflective of the student's performance, as was the case previously. So the additional aspect of having every review paper going through a actual remark is one of the improvement or the addition or recommendation from the IRT report that we implemented to ensure that we would have addressed the concerns of stakeholders. So from that standpoint, I am very much pleased with how our review process has gone.
Then secondly, it was also mentioned that you guys are going back to the older approach. Are you satisfied that those measures will help you guys avoid some of the criticism that you received last year?
Be clear on the old approach. The old approach is saying that we will offer paper to this year. All other forms of how we administer examinations remain the same. So I guess there's a greater level of acceptance for what persons have become accustomed to over the years in writing all three papers, and this year will be no different. They will be writing all three papers.
Thank you, Trey Graves, and let me invite Navendra Siraj.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Siraj is not here today. I was asked to take his place to meet the guy from the Guyana Chronicle. My question is firstly, can Mr. Wesley say how many students have registered to write CSEC this year for twenty twenty-one, and how many students have registered to write Cape? And my second question is, last year, a lot of the students had expected, the expectation that the students had, it was said that it was because there was a difference between the scores awarded by teachers for the SBA and the scores awarded by CXC when they did the moderation. So this year, given that CXC will once again be doing the one hundred percent moderation, will CXC be telling the students what their scores are for the SBA that was given to them by CXC?
We have never in the past released grade on any particular paper to any student except their final grade. It has always been the practice from a policy standpoint that even with the marking of SBAs by teachers, that those grades should not necessarily be presented to students as final, given the fact that there is a moderation process. And so from that standpoint, we would not engage in releasing actual grades on an SBA to student outside of presenting their overall result from, from their, their, their overall results based on their performance. It would have been a deviation from the standard practice of our results. And so we will continue to release results as it relates to their grade as well as the profiles for those grades received.
And as pertaining the amount of students writing CSEC? And as pertaining the amount of students writing CSEC and the amount of students registered to write CSEC and the amount of students registered to write CAPE?
Okay, that number is still not yet finalized because there are a couple of member states and territory still in the process of registering their candidates. Some candidates are still yet to do so, but I don't know, Dr. Manning, can you just bring up the statistics on, on registration to date so that we can provide that information? But just bear in mind that the data is still being compiled as varying territories are still in the process of registering their candidates, given what is happening as it relates to contact time and schools reopening and all of that. So that number will still be determined. Dr. Manning?
Okay, Dr. Wesley, we would have to get that subsequently. We've lost the audio to Dr. Manning. So we will provide, we'll provide that. We've also had the request for the presentation by the Honorable Jeffrey Lloyd, at least the text, because he broke up in part during the presentation. Okay, so I think we have exhausted the questions by the members of the media. And so I'd like to invite Dr. Wesley to give some, oh, sorry. We, sorry, we have another question coming in. So let me allow the Jamaica Gleaner to proceed. Okay, well, we're attended Jamaica Gleaner. Iziner, can you proceed?
Hello, good afternoon. This is Zinyawo from Star of News. I'm afraid my camera isn't working. My question is, when will Guyana be getting the full result for the reviewed process? We were told that I think it's thirty-three are outstanding for CAPE and one hundred and twenty-eight are outstanding for CSEC. Can you give an update on when this will be finalized?
Did you, did you hear the question, Dr. Wesley?
Question about whe- whether went back full result, something like that?
Can you, can you repeat the question, please?
Yes, um, yes. When will Guyana be able to receive the one hundred and twenty-eight remaining results for the reviewed process, for CSEC that is, and for CAPE, the thirty-three outstanding ones?
We were hoping that they would have received all by now, and I'm trusting that perhaps within the next two weeks that will be possible. However, one of the limitation there is that it, it, the activity that needs to be executed now is really at the local level, which would require some amount of access and activity. And given the challenges with COVID, it would have been impacting our ability to complete those tasks. But we are definitely looking at making sure those are released to Guyana's ministries of education in the shortest possible time. Just to say that while we indicated that overall ninety-three percent for Guyana, I think it is much higher than that, about ninety-seven or so. So we will get those graded and submitted in the shortest possible time. It's just that there are other variables. We were in lockdown here in Barbados for quite some time, so it impacted our ability to process information that we have received. Only today, the offices are beginning, and we are not yet allowed to have full operations going, but to at least facilitate some critical tasks. And so we will be utilizing this time to finalize all those that would have come in over the last two to three weeks for which we were out of office and unable to execute our functions.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Wesley. And let's try get in the Jamaica Gleaner this time.
Thank you so much. So just for clarity, is the CXC saying that ministers of health in the various territories gave approval for the examinations to take place? And if so, what data was presented by these ministries so that CXC could satisfy themselves that to carry out the examination was safe? Two, will CXC supervisors, exam supervisors be among those in the party listing in the various countries to get the COVID nineteen vaccines? What arrangements are being made for them? And three, was it a unanimous consensus that six exams be held in the current format as presented?
Okay, there are many parts to your question. And I will leave some of that for the, allow for the secretary to respond to issues relating to to the decision for exams. But I, I just want to point out that the approach that we adopted this year was to ensure that at the national level, that there would be consultations at the national level for the determination as to when best examinations would be offered in that territory. From that national consultation, all the relevant stakeholders would have been consulted. And it is from that perspective that a recommendation would have been made to the Caribbean Examinations Council from the respective territories on their national position. So from that standpoint, I would expect that all relevant stakeholders would have been consulted. A- as it relates to, to the decision of course, I will allow for the relevant authorities to speak on that.
Will be outside the secretariat. The question, as I understand it, because the, the, the audio was not optimal. The question was that whether the decision. Go again, please?
It's a unanimous consensus that arrived at the decision.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Okay, and th- and thirdly, will CX, will CXC supervisors be among those in the party listing for the COVID vaccines in the different territories?
I will say that has not been discussed. That will be left up to the individual member states to determine their protocols for administration of the vaccines.
And could we get the numbers as to those persons who have been registered so far to sit the examination? What is the difference in the five-year average?
I will revert to the CXC to try to attend to respond to that. Over.
First, Dr. Slater. Dr. Manning will now respond in relation to the number of persons registered for CAPE. I just want to point out that in the administration of all our examinations, CXC will ensure that all those persons engaged, supervisors and vigilators would conform with the respective national protocols for those persons to be engaged in any public activity, just as we did last year. So where we can work with ministries in that regard, we will do so and observe the requisite health protocols and even for vaccination and all those requirements that are now in place.
So let me just follow up on Dr. Wesley's response. In relation to the number of persons registered, we have over five hundred thousand registrants for CSEC for the CSEC subject entries. And subject entries would mean that you have, for us, we have oh, we have over twenty, I'm trying to give you the specific figures here for the candidates. So we would have had over twenty-seven thousand. I'm sorry. All right. So let me go again. Subject entries would be five hundred, over five hundred thousand. And for CAPE, it will be over one hundred and seven thousand. For the candidate entries, over twenty-seven thousand for CAPE and over one hundred and two thousand for CSEC. The average has pretty much remained the same over year on year, but we can give further details in relation to the year-on-year comparison.
Okay, thank you.
A little more information there. In relation to the number of persons registering year on year, there will be a slight reduction, and that is just akin to the reduction in the birth rate right across the region over the period. And we have recognized that as a trend for the last couple of years, where the number of persons available to write exams are actually less by virtue of birth rate during those prior years.
Thank you very much.
One more question. One more question.
Yes, please go ahead.
Are you satisfied, are you, are you satisfied with the, with the level of marking, the quality of marking, you know, done to the CXC papers in general, CAPE and CSEC?
Yes, we, we have no challenge currently with the marking process that we would have engaged in ensuring that students are fairly treated. We have had a professional tool to have engaged. In all cases, these persons do not have. And so there are no particular concern at this time as it relates to the, of, of marking by markers. We have been in a, 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 a very good job, an excellent job in marking We have no particular challenge. We do have a rigorous qualification process that we monitor markers as well. And where we recognize that there are differences challenges, we would take the corrective actions early so that the quality remains high.
Thank you. Let me invite in Elia Briggs.
Good afternoon, everyone. So it was mentioned that UE's admission requirements were modified. However, I'm wondering what provisions have been made for those students applying for universities overseas?
We would have had consultations as well with, with, with universities abroad, and the same context that obtains this year is the same context as last year as it relates to the release of results. And so up to September, they will continue to accommodate as much as possible in, in that regard. And so the, the, the position placed on the table was the best position reflecting a consensus and a compromise. So I don't like to use the word compromise, but it reflects some amount of agreement on the best possible solution going forward. So having it at the end of September will still give some students opportunity to register for their exam, for their automatically to universities abroad.
Okay, Navendra Siraj, you have a follow-up question?
Yes, to meet again. I know that the exams are expected to begin on June. I don't know if this perhaps was addressed during Dr. Wesley's speech because it was breaking up a lot. But can we say when students can expect the timetable to be issued? And can you say, like, is this date fixed and there is no chance that it's going to change the date that has already been set for the exam? Is it fixed or is this a possibility that it might change based on circumstances arising?
All right. So, so just to give you the, the broad position here, and then Dr. Manning will actually present to you the details. I think one, this is the definitive position, agreed position for the region for the administration of examinations. The only reason why any change would be made would be consistent with how we would have done it over the years. If on the date for which an examination is scheduled cannot be done, then it will have to be rescheduled within that period. If, God forbid, the COVID nineteen continues to impact the education system in such a way that nothing can be done, certainly, we would have to rethink what obtains. But all things being equal, the dates of the examinations will be from the fourteenth of July on, sorry, the fourteenth of June until the sixteenth of July. Dr. Manning, can you just speak to the release? I think those will be up on the website, if not by this evening, by tomorrow. Can you speak, Dr. Manning?
Okay, so thank you again, Dr. Wesley. Further to statement made by Dr. Wesley, there is a draft timetable that's already on the website. And the details as per his statement is already there. I must add also that the CCSLC examinations would run between the nineteenth and the twenty-second of July for the CVQ, that's more territorially based. And so those dates between May and August twenty twenty-one would have been determined in collaboration with the ministries of education. But the timetable is already on the website. Now that we have a final decision and a position, that timetable will be finalized. We are not expecting much changes there. And therefore, that will be finalized, and you'll have that before the week is out.
Okay, I may allow also a follow-up questions from Jermaine Abel?
Yes, just a quick follow-up. I'm not sure this question was actually answered. But were consultations held with the various ministries of health across the region with regards to actually having or confirm, solidify these dates for CXC? Because, and I know again, the COVID nineteen pandemic is still fluctuating here and there. And for example, Barbados just out of COVID nineteen lockdown. So would any consultations held with regards to confirming dates and times for exams?
So in responding to the question earlier, I made the point that the approach which was taken was for these consultations to be had at the national level with all critical stakeholders for, with the ministries of education in that location. And those consultations would have involved all the relevant personnel and authority that would have given their own opinion as to how examination should be, how examination should be administered or the condition should they be under, under paid. So from that standpoint, it would have been at the respective national levels that those consultations would have had. CXC would not have gone to necessarily have individual consultations again with other stakeholders within the respective territories, because you wanted a national position, a national position to emerge.
If I could just follow up. So are you saying then that if one territory or two territories, they're saying it can't happen the way it is, how is that going to impact CXC's decision going forward? You know, when, when it comes to, to this exam. So you're going to say, Synkets and Nevis, for example, would actually be doing it electronically, students would be doing it via the e-testing aspect of it. Grenade will be doing it differently, Trinidad. So how, how, how is all of this fitting into, to it? If it was done at a national level, and then we realized down the road that stakeholders are saying literally, no, it can't happen the way that, you know, we had talked about it before. And there's not that, you know. you know, leeway or that length of time that can actually facilitate that.
Right. Uh so we, the Caribbean Examinations Council is very flexibly in its approach as we work with the respective national ministries of education and local registrars. And where there are disturbances that require us to rethink the approach within the context of preserving and not disadvantaging the students, we would work with the respective uh territories to ensure that exams are administered uh in the way appropriate with their respective national protocols. We will not, and CXC has never gone, to activate and administer examinations outside of the respective national protocols. And those national protocols are normally dictated through the authorities so vested within those jurisdiction. Because each territory is sovereign, and those sovereign will uh will have to be respected, and CXC will continue to do that. And in doing so, we work closely with the local authorities to make sure that we are compliant, and at the same time preserving and allowing our students to write exams in a safe environment. So while the general framework has been agreed and the consensus by the region has been arrived at, where there are challenges, we will use whatever means available to us. For example, even last year, during the administration of examinations, there are some territories who were unable to write examinations at a particular time. And we were able to respond, being flexibly enough to offer them those examinations electronically, and still allow the students to write their examinations. So we are very flexible in that regard and will facilitate where necessary within the confines of the respective national protocols, the proper administration of examination.
Okay, um I'm gonna allow.
Oh, Doctor Wesley, given the massive learning loss that has been reported across various territories, on what basis did the CXC choose to proceed with this year's examinations?
Okay, so there are two critical areas for us to consider. While there are individuals who might find themselves experiencing challenges in their own preparation, there are also another set of individuals who are ready to write the examinations and feel so prepared to do. In that regard, we wanted to present a situation that allows allow for both group group of students or candidates to have access to examinations if they are able to write, and at the same time presenting others with the opportunity to defer if they are not able to. So essentially, this proposal to allow for the administration of examination at this time really gives us the best of both worlds. Those who are prepared and ready to write the examinations can do so now. Those who figure that, given the circumstances and my inability to complete all that is required to sufficiently demonstrate their competence in an examination, we have given them the opportunity to defer. And in that deferral, whatever coursework in terms of their SBA will be transferred with them. So they are not really losing out. So rather than saying no exam, and then different disenfranchised those students who are really ready to write examinations and want to move on to their universities, they can do it. Those who figure, well, I have lost all my contact and learning information, I'm unable to write it, can use the deferral option that we have to defer their exam to either January of this year or June of next year. So this really presents the best of both worlds. Those who write and be prepared will have the opportunity to do so. And those who find themselves experiencing difficulty in completing the task at hand can do so next year through the deferral.
Okay, we have time for just one more follow-up question, Avendra Siraj. I'm giving you that opportunity.
Thank you so much. Um yeah, my last question is, I know Mister Wesley spoke about the SBAs and extension for submission. I'm not sure if he gave a specific date. Can you say what is the specific close-up date for SBAs? And as well, in Guyana, we, this is pertaining to last year's twenty twenty exams. In Guyana, we had three schools where students received ungraded, and and then an investigation revealed that it was that the teachers did not submit the SBAs for those students, even though the students would have submitted the SBAs to the school. When last I spoke with the Minister of Education, and here she indicated that CXC had not yet decided whether they, what would would be done about the situation. Can you say where, what CXC's position is on that situation if one has been arrived at as yet?
For the the for in relation to the submission of SBAs, uh we continue to maintain the same position where persons would have at least made an attempt to submit SBAs, those would be given consideration. Where the attempt is not reflected on our system, uh then there is a particular challenge, because who, on whose word you're going to have to rely on now in terms of when those SBAs were completed. There is a cutoff point. We would have facilitated an extension of that several times. Uh so those situations for which the minister would have submitted to us, we would have addressed and continue to address those uh as it relates to the the marking of those SBAs. As it relates to the deadline this year, we would have extended the time uh to for the submission of SBAs, and we have communicated those to the local registrar. The reason why we have not necessarily stated a definitive date uh to the public, because the local registrars themselves would have a process for the receipt of those those SBAs, so that they can have them uh sent to us in time for marking and grading. So that date is the date for which CXC would receive, and we would receive those SBAs. But the local registrars would have their own timelines, which I don't necessarily want to confuse, because if we go and say, CXC said this date, and then the local registrar said, in our processing time, we need to have it by this time in order to process and do what they need to do to get it to CXC, it might cause some amount of confusion. But to indicate that we have extended the deadline in that regard, and I think from our extension, the local registrars have also announced their own extension in line with what we have submitted.
Okay, thank you very much to the members of the media for your questions. That's all the time we have today. Just want to ask Doctor Wesley, given the fact that most of the questions were directed at you, if you have any um overview, any concluding remarks, and then I'll ask the chair, of course, the Honorable Jeffrey Lloyd, to just give some uh concluding remarks before we wind up. But Doctor Wesley, first you.
Good. Thank you very much, Chair. Just to say that the Caribbean Examinations Council is still cognizant of the challenges that our students are experiencing, and the decisions that we make will continue to be uh in the best interest of our students while preserving the integrity of the examination process on which they rely. We will continue to work closely with the respective ministries of education and national authorities to ensure that during this period they are also safe, or invigilators or markers are all safe and abiding by the strict protocol established by the respective local. We continue to work closely with the ministries of education and other critical to make sure that our students experience the least amount of disruption there is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Doctor Wesley, and the Honorable Jeffrey Lloyd.
Um, good afternoon. I'm substitute in for the Honorable Lloyd, who had to uh to the House of Assembly. But on his behalf, I'd like to thank um all persons involved in coming to these events. Um uh the minister would like to thank his colleague, uh Ministers of Education, for the uh uh ministers to work together to come to a makeable agreement and solution way forward in terms of the CXC. Would also like to thank uh uh Doctor Wesley and his team for the the leadership that they have provided and are providing um to ensure that the CXC exams so can uh credential students, but also to ensure the integrity is intact. Also like to thank the uh Caracom uh Secretariat for their um uh leadership and their support in this venture. Um we'd like to also thank the media for being involved in this process, so that the citizens of the common, uh the Caribbean can be aware of what is happening regarding the uh exit exam C. Uh so once again, on behalf of Minister Lloyd, we'd like to thank you very much for your participation.
And thank you all once again, as we bring the press conference to a close.